Arrived is Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, the time is 7:00 PM. I call today's meeting to order. Note, this meeting is being recorded for live broadcasts and televised by replay by Bourne TV. So the microphones that you see are only for the TV. They do not amplify anybody's voice in this room or anyplace else. If anyone is audio or visually recording, they must acknowledge so at this time. Sitting done. There is a sign-in sheet on that table as soon as you come in the door. If you haven't signed in there, we request that you sign in. If there's any public comment, they must clearly state their full name for the record. This process is a project review as the applicant or applicants represented to make a presentation. Then the board members seek additional information if necessary. And then the public is allowed to comment if it's a public hearing. The preceding listing matters to the agenda of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not items, not all items listed may be discussed, and other items not listed may be discussed to the limited extent permitted by the open meeting law. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and vote by the planning board. Again, I remind everybody, please silence your cell phones if you haven't done so already. And our first agenda item would be the approval of meeting minutes from April 10th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the meetings from the minute meetings from the previous meeting.
April 10th?
April 10th.
Second. Chairman, second by Doc.
Liz, may I abstain?
Okay. We require a roll call vote. Liz, you were not here, so you'll have to abstain on the vote.
All right, abstaining.
Thank you. Mr. Doucette? Approval of the meeting minutes?
He's on mute.
Yeah, he's trying. Dan, can you unmute?
Yeah.
Okay. Corinne? Amanda?
Yes.
Dan?
He gave you a thumbs up.
He gave us a thumbs up, so it's a vote. John?
Yes.
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the April 10th meeting minutes. Also, April 24th, 25 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move they be accepted as drafted.
Second.
Motion made by Doc, second by... Further comments from the board? Roll call vote. Liz?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
There he is. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 First item on the agenda is application for modification special permit 04-2019B, 21 Canal Street. See applicant have a...
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Eliza Cox with Latanzi Spalding and Landreth in Orleans on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Greg Worson from Greensill Environmental. As the board closed this public hearing on April 10th, I have no real presentation or prepared comments. Greg and I are here if the board has any technical questions or if it requires clarification on any of the documents that are within the public record as you deliberate on this request to modify the approved project for a downsized development. We have had dialogue with your staff since the last meeting regarding the board's interest to condition a sidewalk, and there is a condition that we've worked with staff to submit with staff, which is number 27 on your deliberation sheet. Mr. Chairman, as a procedural matter, again, since the public's hearing is closed, I don't want to provide any real testimony, but I did want to note that I did receive a copy of the May 13th letter from unidentified residents, which I saw had been submitted to staff. I would note that this was submitted almost two months after the public hearing was closed on April 10th, and therefore, to the extent that it contains new comments, which I think it does, that were not discussed during the public hearing that, or in the public record, then respectfully, it should not and cannot be considered by the board because the public hearing has been closed. I believe your town council is present on Zoom this evening, and so if you have any questions on that, I would suggest that you confer with your town council. I want to thank the board for its deliberations, and again, Greg and I are here if you have questions or need clarification on anything technical that's in the public record. But as the public hearing is closed, we obviously are not submitting any new information or making any formal presentations.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have the letter from the Sagamore Water District? Public hearing's not open. You're just gonna have to have a seat.
I'm trying to ask your question. Put my hand up.
Go ahead. What's your question?
I'd like to have a moment of personal privilege if you would bear with me to allow me to read the May 13th letter that was just referred to. It is a one-page document. I could probably read it in about three minutes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I don't like to interrupt people. It's not my style, but the public hearing has been closed by the board. And you can't consider it.
Right. We understand that, Ms. Cox. We... I don't want to argue either.
I don't either, but...
We understand that point that was made, and I calmly waited till you were finished before I tried to raise my hand and ask the board for a moment of personal privilege.
We're not going to take anything from the public right now. We're deliberating amongst the board right now.
So this is from myself. It's not even from the public. This is from myself. I'm asking you to allow me to enter it into the record here tonight from myself.
It should have been done when the public hearing was still open. The public hearing's not open anymore. It's closed.
But may I address the reason why I am here now tonight at this point in time trying to submit this letter?
No, sir.
So the people that it matters most to don't get to say anything.
That was what the public...
So as we know, the first hearing, there was a motion made to close a public hearing. The entire room that night did not understand that the public hearing was to be closed.
I'm sorry they didn't understand it, but we followed parliamentary procedures. We closed the public hearing, and that's the end of it.
I'm sure you understand parliamentary procedures a lot better than the general public. So for consideration to the general public, I think it should have been more clear to the public that night, possibly by using the word "public" in the motion that was used to close the public hearing, because the word "public" was not used in that motion. It was not even understood by all the planning board members there that night. So I don't think I'm in the minority to say that there was some ambiguity of the understanding of whether that public hearing was closed that night or not.
Well, it was, and we have a letter from town council regarding that.
This is the only minor additional new comments we brought together as a group, assuming we had one more chance at the mic. And I'm asking for that one more chance at the microphone right now.
Cannot allow it. I cannot allow it because the public hearing is closed.
But you have the opportunity to open the public hearing again.
The attorney said you could reopen it.
It is your choice. I request that the board has a vote by a show of hands on whether they would allow the public hearing to be reopened for this night only.
We got a notice from town council that we cannot open the public hearing again.
That is different than what he said literally on the Zoom meeting that night.
Well, we have it in writing from him. Basically, what he said was if we open the public hearing again, we have to re-advertise everything, which will be push everything off at least a month. We're not gonna...
That's understandable.
So...
You're here to serve the public. You're here to serve your constituents. Good.
Would you even allow me to just hand this letter to every member of the board?
You can hand it. We'll put it in there. Yes.
I got multiple copies here.
I already handed it to them with the signatures on it.
Okay. We have it from... Is town council on board? Brian, are you there?
When we have a survey, he said he could. You were the ones only that have the right to...
Everything, who said?
Everything.
Ask the doc.
Mr. Bertram, can we even accept these written notices from them because we've closed the public hearing? I don't believe we can.
I mean, you can't consider them at this point. You know, if the public hearing is closed, that portion of the hearing is closed. Everything you've said is accurate, you know? You want to reopen a public hearing, it is legally possible, but it's not sufficient to just give the 48 hours under the open meeting law. You have to give full public notice as the statute requires. And one of the biggest considerations is, is the planning board also has a set timeframe that it must act on the application by statute. So, you know, an applicant can waive that deadline, but I understand that it's not being waived here. So that's sort of the conundrum that we face.
Thank you, sir. Who was reviewing this project? Sean?
Last month, we sat down and said that we wanted to have this made open. And you said, all right, we'll take another consideration.
Let's change.
We got a notice from town council saying that we can't reopen the meeting. He said we can if we choose to.
Okay.
We have to extend the time.
Would you share that opinion among yourselves with the group tonight, whether you choose to or not?
Can I make a comment?
Knowing that it would have to be another advertised meeting to meet all type of requirements of advertisement.
Mr. Duggan, go ahead.
I believe the proponent needs to grant an extension, time extension, which they're not interested in doing.
Can you speak up, please?
I believe the proponent needs to grant a time extension in order for that to happen, which I don't believe that they are willing to do.
Which you don't know for certain.
Sitting right in front of you.
Well, I think Cox already indicated that she was not interested in continuing on...
But all the people that are impacted by this, they aren't impacted as much as we are. We're the residents. We're the residents that live here, not these two.
I just don't seem to understand that the proponent has the means of withholding the board's feeling to reopen a public hearing or not. I would think the board would have more rules and authority in that decision more than any applicant or proponent. I am dumbfounded to say that you're gonna say it's up to the proponent at this point in time, even if you chose to try to reopen this public hearing at a later date.
Thank you for your comments. Sean?
Thank you.
You have a...
Yes. Mr. Chairman, after reviewing the project and the applicant, 21 Hunters Brook Road, Inc., proposed development of forested land into medical office building and 32 town homes. The property is located at 21 Canal Street, MAP 11, parcel 27. The project is located in a B2 and R40 district, and it's in allowed use under section 220, 2220. Based on the planning board's review of the exhibits and testimony, the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning bylaw, section 1230, site plan special permit, and section 1331 special permit criteria. Special permit 04-2019B meets the criteria for a special permit. Therefore, I move to approve site plan special permit number 04-2019B in accordance with the following findings, terms, and conditions. One, on December 12th, 2019, the planning board approved the site plan review special permit number 04-2019 for 21 Canal Street at the time 21 Hunters Brook Road to develop a medical office building, an assisted living facility, and 15 age-restricted town homes. Additionally, on January 25th, 2024, the planning board approved an extension of the site plan review special permit number 04-2019X-A. The amended application is to develop a two-story medical office building consisting of 35,400 square feet, a 1,200-square-foot clubhouse, and 32 age-restricted townhouses. The town homes consist of eight structures with 14 one-bedroom and 18 two-bedroom units. The applicant proposes setting aside 12.5% of the town home units as affordable housing, four units. The project is being reviewed pursuant to the zoning bylaw, section 1230, site plan review, and special permit criteria of section 1331. The proposed modifications are consistent with and meet the applicable special permit and site plan review standards. The project qualified as a development of regional impact. The Cape Cod Commission approved the project with conditions on July 11th, 2019, and approved two minor modifications on April 19th, 2024, and March 19th, 2025. All documents, plans submitted as part of the Cape Cod Commission review packet, along with all documents and plans submitted to the planning board, shall be incorporated into this decision and is subject to use as enforcement of this decision. Any deviation requires resubmital and approval by the planning board. Conditions: Prior to the issuance of a building permit, financial surety will be, shall be provided for earthwork, stormwater, parking, underground utilities, and landscaping for the estimated cost plus an assumption of 10% inflation. The surety shall be provided either through an escrow account, bond, or otherwise in the amount and form acceptable to the Town of Bourne Town Council. A total of four dwelling units to be restricted as affordable and to be included on the Bourne Affordable subsidized Housing Inventory. The applicant shall work with the Bourne Housing Trust and the Bourne Housing Partnership to determine which units will be designated as the affordable units. No occupancy permit shall be issued for any of the residential units until an affordable housing regulatory agreement between the Town of Bourne and the applicant has been signed and recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Construction vehicle access to the site is permitted from Hunters Brook Road only during initial site clearing and construction of the bridge. Once the bridge is constructed, all site access will be via the Canal Street entrance, including access for residential construction of the townhouses. The developer will be held responsible for directing all construction and delivery vehicles to approach the site using Canal Street. Construction delivery vehicles exceeding 18,000 pounds gross vehicle weight shall be prohibited on Hunters Brook Road except during initial site clearing and bridge construction. Dust control shall be maintained on-site at all times during construction. Local roads shall be swept as needed, but no less than once a week. Parking on Hunters Brook Road and Patty's Way by construction site vehicles is prohibited following initial site clearing and bridge construction. Exterior site work and building construction shall be performed between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. No construction equipment shall be operated outside a building on holidays or Sundays. The roadways servicing the residential units shall be named and approved by the select board. House street numbers shall be assigned by the town engineer before building permits are issued. And a butters contact list, including email address and cell phone numbers, shall be solicited from both direct abutters and concerned neighborhood residents upon agreement of those wishing to be notified. Listed members shall be notified 14 days before work begins within the right-of-ways surrounding the project. The list shall be retained to disseminate information concerning unplanned emergencies affecting the surrounding right-of-ways. Debris or trash that becomes a nuisance to a butters or blows into the roadway shall be removed immediately upon notification by the town. Site work limits shall be staked before site work commences and maintained at all times. If the work limit perimeter is changed, the planning board or its designee shall be notified immediately. An as-built plan shall be submitted to the planning department at the completion of the following phases and may trigger planning board project review for each completed phase. The project engineer shall submit a written statement with seal, stamp affixed, certifying that all work has been done in accordance with the approved plans and conditions of this approval. The three phases are A, access bridge construction; B, medical office building construction; C, residential unit construction and project closeout. DPW to inspect catch basins down gradient from the construction sites prior to construction, and the project engineer to certify catch basins are operational after construction of access bridge and prior to occupancy permits on medical office building and residential townhouse units. If found compromised, the applicant will make corrections, for example, cleaning, et cetera. This approval shall lapse after three years from the granting of this special permit if substantial construction has not commenced except for good cause. The planning board, upon the written request of the owner or applicant, may, for good cause, extend the approval in writing. The applicant, owner, construction site manager shall arrange and conduct a monthly construction briefing with appropriate town officials. The frequency of the meetings can be reduced or increased as appropriate by the building inspector. A plan showing a defined limit of work must be submitted prior to issuance of a building permit. Emergency fire vehicle access must conform to the requirements of chapter 18 in the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Code 527 CMR. We will need a copy of a fire apparatus road plan, which will include an analysis and evaluation of fire apparatus maneuvers throughout the access roads created by swept path analysis and turn simulation software. The plan shall bear the seal and signature of the responsible registered design professional. The plan must accommodate the department ladder truck. The bridge shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with nationally recognized standards and must be designed for a live load sufficient to carry the imposed loads of department apparatus. Vehicle load limit signs shall be posted at both entrances to the bridge. A sprinkler system is required for the medical office building under the State Building Code and Massachusetts General Law, chapter 148, section 26G. At least one commercial knock box will be required for the medical office building that is large enough to hold all keys for the property. Based on the size and layout, a second box may be required. An elevator knock box will be required on the main recall floor of the elevator bank. The box shall hold multiple sets of master keys, the elevator access tube, and any other specialized tools required on-site. Emergency responder communications coverage is required under the building code for all new buildings. The fire department recommends planning for this system to be required. However, signal strength testing should take place once the building is substantially complete to confirm the need for the system. Defer to the health department to verify septic adequacy. Defer to conservation commission for approval of the conservation restriction. Plans showing additional guest parking and relocation of mailboxes must be submitted to the planning department for approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Future ANR plans require all approved access and/or egress to remain through the medical office building parking lot. Provided that, the Town of Bourne authorizes construction of the sidewalk improvements shown on the sketch plan entitled Sidewalk Sketch Plan Hunters Brook Road dated 5/14/25, known as the Sketch Plan. And B, the North Sagamore Water District amends its order of conditions to allow the applicant to loop the new water main through the subject property rather than extend along Canal Street and then along Hunters Brook Road, per the current order. And C, it is determined that the proposed sidewalk can be constructed within the existing Hunters Brook right-of-way without the need for any private property takings, then the applicant shall construct said sidewalk improvements, shown on the sketch plan, at its cost and expense, prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the residential town homes. In the event that the Town of Bourne does not authorize construction of the sidewalk and/or if the North Sagamore Water District does not amend its order of conditions for the project to allow the water main to loop solely through the site, rather than extend the water main down Canal Street and several hundred feet to its terminating point on Hunters Brook Road near the vicinity of Patty's Lane as currently conditioned, then prior to issuance of the first occupancy certificate for the residential town homes, the applicant shall pay to the Town of Bourne the estimated cost of striping a crosswalk across Hunters Brook Road and its proportionate share of the cost of the construction of a sidewalk as depicted on the sketch plan. The proportionate share of the cost of the sidewalk work shall be calculated and based upon the subject property's amount of linear frontage on Hunters Brook Road as compared to all other properties' linear frontage on Hunters Brook Road. For example, if compared to all other properties fronting on Hunters Brook Road, the subject property has 20% of the total amount of frontage on Hunters Brook Road, then it will be required to pay the equivalent of 20% of the cost of the sidewalk work. This decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Land Court Registry, and a copy returned to the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Thank you, John. Can I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Dan, did you second that? Yes, he did. Okay, so you get that? John and Dan? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. So I'll start up on the screen first with Dan.
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Catherine?
I have a bunch of questions on this before I vote. Can we talk about them before I vote? Because there's a couple of questions that I have on that.
Finish this roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Would you questions?
Because I went through with the special permit, and I'm trying to understand. Last time we talked about, okay, construction of vehicle site...
You're not allowed to hear what you're saying.
On number four, construction of vehicle access to the site is permitted from Hunters Brook Road only during initial site clearing and construction of the bridge. My question is, how long is the site clearing and how long is the, what is that anticipated timeframe for the construction of the bridge and the site clearing?
The only thing I can tell you is based on what I've seen before, it all depends on the company that they hired to clear the lot. If you look at Two Kendall Ray Place, they cleared that, stumped it, started bringing it and fill within three days. It can be longer. If they're a smaller company and they don't have the sufficient equipment, it could take longer.
Can we ask the applicant what their anticipation is?
Greg, you have any anticipation on that?
I can only answer that there's two parts to it, Catherine. One is the clearing, which will go very fast. You're gonna clear, stump, move a lot of earth, ream the lawn, put down temporary cover, like rye, annual rye grass to prevent dust. The second part is...
Greg, do you mind standing up? Sorry about your back.
It's okay.
If it's green, you're good.
For the record, Greg Worson, Greensill Environmental. There's two timing pieces associated with this, Catherine. One would be the clearing and stumping, which is pretty fast. The second thing is the abutment work, which will be multi, you know, cast-in-place abutments because it's a 65-foot span. So I would say that, you know, we are planning on getting it in modular pieces versus casting everything in place. So the longer part of the work is actually the bridge, but they'd be working halfway on Canal Street and halfway on the site with the cranes to get the pieces in. Can I give you the actual days of the bridge? I'm not smart enough to...
That's okay. I'm just looking, you know what? That was a big concern for everybody.
But as Chris said, you know, it's people like Gavoni Tree that come in there really quick, and then definitely it's gonna be a larger construction firm that has, you know, D8 bulldozers because there is a significant earth-moving project there. We tried to balance the site, and that's why it is significant, so there's plus or minus.
Two months, three months, six months? I just like...
Can't?
No, you can't say that. Okay.
Yeah, I'd be giving you misinformation just because it's not my area of expertise. Yeah, I'd be giving you misinformation just because it's not my area of expertise. I apologize.
Okay.
Anything else, Catherine?
Yes, actually. We had talked about the Water Department. The Water Department came in last time with some conditions.
Right.
And I just, I wanted to understand if the Water Department has been contacted before we make these.
We got, that email came out from Jen in the office. The Water Department is aware of it, and they've already approached the proponent. If they have to loop it, they'll have to loop it, they'll have to pay for it, but yeah, the Water District.
And what about current allocation? Because it's, the project has changed. So what was additionally allocated for that project?
Well, that's, that's between the Water District and them. We don't get into allocations.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. All right, so we've had a vote. It's been approved.
Catherine didn't vote.
Catherine, did you want to vote?
Yes, no, I didn't.
You're not going to approve it? Okay. So they have one, two, three.
Eight to one.
Eight to one. Okay. Okay, it's approved. You're all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chris, can we take that? Take the five minutes.
I think we're going to have like a little recess until they exit.
That would be really good because I have a little.
Yeah, I haven't followed up the next item, like clear out.
Yeah, we're good. We're good.
Extension act.
Yeah, he's got that. But that doesn't mean he has an allocation. He's going large.
He's going small.
I understand, but we have to see.
You can't get a moving.
Yeah.
Let's see.
So I'm going to just ask.
Do you want to get a copy of the order of conditions or let's even talk about what you just voted on?
They'll give it from the Planning Department, yeah. We each has had our own.
Okay, next on the agenda is an application for a special permit with a waiver, 08/2025, One Crane Circle, 1233 Route 28A, map 52, parcel 95. The application is for a change of use for Warehouse Bay Unit Number Four from a warehouse to a motor vehicle retail sales under 1,600 square feet with an overflow motor vehicle storage lot. Can you folks head outside, please? Thank you.
There's still going on.
Then be quiet.
With an overflow motor vehicle storage lot on the southeastern portion of 1233 Route 28A in a water resource district. John's getting the door.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here, so.
You introduce yourself, your name.
Yep. So I'm Jack Plaza. I am a sophomore, soon to be a junior, at Stonehill College, and I'm looking to get approval to have a used car lot on the property that you were talking about. I'm going to focus on learning all the procedures in the business, making sure I do everything right, and also being able to help the Bourne community and Cape Cod community find quality used cars. And we're also going to be running a consignment model along with traditional used car sales where we'll help, say you had like a 2015 Suburban, and you didn't want to go to the dealership and lose a lot of money on the trade-in value, you would take it to us where we perform the same procedures that a traditional dealership would and sell it on your behalf for retail value, leaving you with ultimately a little bit more money, hopefully.
Okay. I know I went out with Catherine, and we looked at the site the other day. Where exactly are the cars going to be stored? The lower portion, out towards 28A?
No, that's going to be a potential overflow. I don't think I'll use it, but I wanted to have the approval just in case. Maybe I hit it big and I get a little bit luckier. They're mostly going to be up that hill directly next to Crane Appliance.
Okay.
And I'm going to have probably, you know, two or three cars maximum, maybe four, aligned kind of diagonally. And it's not going to probably get a lot of foot traffic, which I'm all right with. I'll focus more on online sales, so. And I won't be impeding on anybody's space or anything.
Okay. Right, because we went up and we looked at that building. It's got like 10 bays, I think?
That one has seven, I believe.
Seven bays?
Seven or eight.
And you're number four, which is basically right in the middle.
Yep, I'm number four. It's Greg from Falmouth Ready Mix on the left and JP Noonan on the right.
Okay.
Good company.
Yeah, great company. Very nice to me.
Catherine? You heard this project? You have anything? Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on this at all.
Mr. Chair.
And I didn't have this project, so.
Okay.
But I love.
You're the reviewer.
Thank you. I'm like, oh my God, I love this concept, but we just drove everywhere.
Sure, perfect. The applicant proposes to operate a used car dealership at a current vacant commercial warehouse building. The applicant is asking to waive the site plan review and apply for a special permit for a change of use to One Crane Circle and 1233 Route 28A. Application is being reviewed specifically pursuant to Section 1331 Special Permit Criteria, Section 4700 Water Resource District, Section 1235 Waiver of Site Plan Review. The project is located in a B2 Business District and isn't allowed use according to Section 2220, requiring site plan review, special permit approval from the Planning Board. The applicant proposes to use existing parking for vehicle display at One Crane Circle. If needed, the applicant has permission to park overflow vehicles at the vacant lot at 1233 Route 28A. The applicant has, will not have more than 10 cars at a time at these locations for sale. There are no changes to the building proposed. Special permit site plan review. Parking requirements under Section 3320. A total of nine spaces is required for the existing warehouse, one space per 1,000 square feet. A total of 17 parking spaces are located at One Crane Circle. This will allow for eight surplus existing spaces to be used. The lot at 1233 28A can take any overflow parking. Special permit decision criteria. Pedestrian vehicular flow and safety, it's compliant, no changes are proposed. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, no changes are proposed. Impact on the natural environment, compliant, no tree or vegetation cover. Clearing is proposed. Impact on nearby premises, there will be no impact on nearby developed premises. Visual compatibility with the surroundings, no changes are proposed. Water resource districts, contribution to cumulative impact on public water supplies, there are no proposed changes to the impervious service of the property. Impact of the town's need for year-round housing available for persons of all income levels, the project would have no impact on the town's needs for year-round housing. Water resource district special permit criteria. A, a complete list of all hazardous materials to be used or stored on the premises accompanied by a description of the measures proposed to protect all storage containers or facilities from vandalism, corrosion, leakage, and to provide control of spills. A description of potentially hazardous waste to be generated, including storage and disposal methods. Evidence of qualified professional supervision of design and installation of any proposed storage facilities or containers for hazardous materials or waste. Recommended conditions, this plan is subject to all rules, regulations, bylaws. Sorry, let me read this instead.
Just the conditions.
Conditions, this plan is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Bourne. An outdoor display area requires Planning Board approval. The site plan shows the area being used for display of vehicles for sale. The applicant will not have more than 10 cars at a time at these properties for sale. Within a water resource district, motor vehicle service, washing, repair are prohibited. Proposed signage requires a separate permit with the Building Department. The decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Land Court Registry and a copy returned to the Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. And those are the conditions, Mr. Chair.
Can you just make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion that this application for waiver of site plan review and special permit is approved.
Second that.
Motion made a second on that. Just on that, any other questions from the board? No? Okay, John?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Liz?
Yes, an interesting business model.
Thank you.
Right.
I've seen it before. Okay. Catherine?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes, yes.
Really excited to wait concept. Congratulations.
Look forward to it.
I'm looking for a Corvette.
Yeah. Okay, we now have an application for modification of a special permit, 19 of 2021D, Two Kendall Ray Place, map 24.1, parcel 6. The application seeks to have modification of the site plan, special permit number 19 of 2021C, for the previously approved mixed-use development to raise the grading on the site to bring the elevation of Building 2, the clubhouse, the surface parking area, and associated utilities such as EV charging station transformers and building generators above the FEMA 100-year floodplain. Requesting to consolidate the subsurface drainage system to contain it entirely within the site and to change the sloped areas along the south property line facing the canal to a two-tiered segmented block wall. Do we have this?
I am the reviewer.
Yeah, the attorney is coming in, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This should be middle of landscaping in there.
Yeah. That's the money guy. Is the A-team all ready?
Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Go right ahead, introduce yourself, please.
Excellent, thank you very much. My name is Jeff Tocchio. I'm an attorney from DTM Law up in Hingham, and with me, Tom Broderick from Canal Cove Development LLC. Behind me should be Josh Green from Crocker Design, who's our engineer. Julie Bartlett from ZDS Architects should be here, and then Ben LaFrance from Hawk Design, who's our LSA. You folks have seen this, you've seen it several times, so what I'm planning to do this evening is I will run down, we usually provide a real comprehensive supplement with our filings, so we went through everything there. What I'm going to try to do is go through, give you a little summation. I know you're all familiar with the site, and then unless you guys want specific pieces gone through, I think I'll leave it open so that you can ask some questions, and hopefully I'll cover most of what we're planning to do.
Sounds good.
Great. So Two Kendall Ray, we're back. We've got the same basic layout. I'm going to use Ben's plan, orienting you all up north, Kendall Ray Place. We've got, remember, Building One, Building Two. We've got the clubhouse, the canal's down in here, drift of land. You've got your public park, you've got the hotel. We've got the Mass Maritime parking up on the, basically, northeast corner. What we're proposing to do, if you look at this and you just look at what the other one was, your quick impression is there are basically no changes. The changes that we have are basically an elevation, so it winds up being a project that we pull up from the middle of the site, coming back down to bring it up above the base floodplain. You'll remember that another group had this, when it was apartments. Canal Cove came in and said, we can do this better, we can make it into condominiums, we can bring the clubhouse in, we can bring in the pool, everything basically going in the right direction. As they start to get into the nitty-gritty and the details, who knew that the utility companies don't know where you put the EV chargers when you've got floodplain? Problem one. Who knew how difficult it is to get the insurance on the clubhouse for a condominium association when it is in the floodplain? Sure, under the building permit, we can have knockout panels, we can, you know, have sacrificial pieces, but it gets a lot easier when we get into a position where we're able to elevate. We're able to pull it up about, I'd say, is it four feet on average? So it comes up slightly, and then what it does is it gets things and it pulls it out of the floodplain. So we're able to cite transformers, generators, the EV chargers above the floodplain. It's subtle, the project looks the same, but by doing that, we also are able to get other advantages and benefits. So for example, you, we consolidated all of the drainage, five main drainage systems subsurface the last time you saw us, now that's down to three. It meets the 100-year storm, so we get all the performance standards, but we're able to consolidate things. Maintenance is easier, it just, it just becomes a better project as we go forward. What we're also able to do is we're able to separate the pool a little bit from the clubhouse, which then allows us, you know, the pool opens, the pool closes. The clubhouse isn't now necessarily attached to the pool, so it can be in the fall, we've got different amenities out there, so it spreads it out a little bit, and it makes it so it's a little more year-round when you go out there. To achieve that, we've now got on the backside, so on the south, and then hooking around, we've got a wall which is two-tier, it's the versalock that comes in, so it goes up about four feet. It's then got extensive planting, it's got a beach plum, then goes up again. That will be about 95 feet away, so the base of that wall will be about 95 feet away from the edge of the walking path down next to the canal. All of the vegetation that is, you know, there, so you're going to basically get probably 50, 60 feet of vegetation, which is the oak and which is the pine. So you've got all these plantings that go in behind all the natural plantings. Versalock wall will be in, you know, natural brownish color, et cetera, so should be something that, you know, Josh has said, you will actually intentionally have to turn and look at it to try to kind of see the wall because the way that it grows in, everything's all growing in now, so you get a good idea as to what that looks like. Going down real quick, building number two gets pulled up commensurate, so basically its relationship to the grade remains the same, so by bringing the grade up in that area by like four feet, the building comes up four feet, what that does is the advantage of bringing the floor of the parking area underneath up a couple of feet. So it doesn't pull that entirely out of the floodplain, but it does, you know, it does enhance its flood resiliency because it's at a higher, at a higher level. So going forward to be able to do all of this, you know, kind of preemptively, we're in there now, building permits, et cetera, kind of being applied for, different works happening, but now's our opportunity to go in there, fix all of these, you know, all of these different points, and be able to go forward with a project that's designed that much better. And, you know, that's how this is laying out. Additionally, we've got one more space, so it goes from 279 to 280. It conforms, you know, no changes there, no changes to Kendall Ray, it's still got the 31 spaces out front, so all of that's in good shape. Also, you wouldn't notice it, but Building One, we shifted a few feet to the east because we were concerned that it was, you know, we were kind of right up against the cul-de-sac right-of-way, so figuring that there are going to be overhangs, you know, things of that nature. We had the opportunity, we had certainly a lot of space, we got to shift it over a couple of feet. But it's little, little details that we were able to jump into now that we've looked at this thing enough times and just get the familiarity and the comfort with the plan. All of the landscaping, you know, basically from. of these different points and be able to go forward with a, with a project that's designed that much better, and, you know, that's how this is laying out. Additionally, we've got one more space, so it goes from two seventy-nine to two eighty. It conforms, you know, no changes there, no changes to Kendall Ray, it's still got the thirty-one spaces out front, so all of that's in good shape. Also, you wouldn't notice it, but building one, we shifted a few feet to the east because we were concerned that it was, you know, we were kind of right up against the cul-de-sac right-of-way, so figuring that there are going to be overhangs, you know, things of that nature, we had the opportunity, we had certainly a lot of space, we got to shift it over a couple of feet. But it's little, little details that we were able to jump into now that we've looked at this thing enough times and just get the familiarity and the comfort with the plan. All of the landscaping, you know, basically from here north, it's all what you saw before, it's got some more supplements, it's got more plantings around some of the generators, transformers, but then all of a sudden, just if you look at the detail that's back there, it's, it's pretty significant. But again, it's the canal side, it's where people are going to be, it's where people are going to be outside, and it's an opportunity, you know, for these guys. The name of the game here is to amenitize it, so they're able to lift that up, put it all together, and now with the clubhouse not being in the floodplain, instead of having all the knockout panels, et cetera, it's, you know, it's more kind of, I call it more permanent construction, it's just, it's finished that much, much better, and it just makes it a structure that's going to, you know, kind of be a little more seasonal. With that, I think that I've covered everything that I wanted to. I looked down twice, but so, we've been dealing with this for a while now. With that, if there are any questions, I've got these folks available to answer any of your questions.
I have one question, and it's really simple. The pool area and the clubhouse. Access to bathrooms from the outside for the pool, is that going to be in that building?
Yes.
I know, okay, because I've been down to Florida a few places, and almost every one of them have a clubhouse like that next to the pool, but they have outside access for the bathrooms, which is, works out very well.
There's not a door directly into the bathroom from the exterior, but there's a door through ancillary space from that zone that directs you only to the bathrooms.
Okay, so you can lock out the rest of the building and allow people? Okay. That's just what I've seen down in Florida, and it seems to work that they have access directly outside to the bathrooms, and it allows them to, as she said, lock down the rest of the building, it just seems to make a lot of sense for it to work, so.
Great.
Anybody else on the board have any questions before you?
Just, just one. The electrical transformers in the front is unfortunate. Is that driven by flood elevation considerations?
So, yes, and what he's, they're in here, yeah, so they're in the front, and that was one of the things where he kind of hung up.
It's like a carbuncle on someone's nose, you know, I mean, you've got a nice front elevation, landscaping looks good, that, no other options? Backside, you've got elevation on the backside, tell me what?
So we need to provide access to, for the, for the utility company.
Got that.
Right, you understand that. So, there are four transformers on property, and so we have to coordinate one serving, two serving the first building.
Excuse me, you're going to have to come up so we can get you on the television microphones? Thank you.
So there are four transformers on property, two serving building one, one serving building two, and one serving the clubhouse, and so the two serving building one, due to the limited space on either side of the, you know, of the short ends of the building and the access to the garage and the boardwalk and the grade changes over here, we were, we were pretty limited on the location to provide access to locate these transformers unfortunately, and give access to the utility company to access them in the rare case of replacement, so.
So, no options on the south side of building one?
No, not, and I think that was also partially due to the stormwater design, if I remember correctly, it was sort of like.
Separation of the building.
Yeah.
Say it again, please? Separation of the building, couldn't have them on the backside related to the stormwater and the building.
Yes.
So you can't put, you certainly can't put landscape in front of it, so it's sort of a feature on Kendall Ray. That's unfortunate.
I've seen, I've seen some pretty interesting ways of screening transformers recently. Some of them are simply done with a, a small section of fence as well as plantings, so you're not looking at the green box.
Has the utility company shown any flexibility?
I don't know how tall they are, off the top of my head.
Working with the electric company, there's no flexibility there.
No.
You do it their way or you don't do it, so, that's just the way they are.
It's just, it's a missed opportunity.
We, we've been dealing with that for years. Hotel Veritas in Harvard Square, was beautiful building, absolute beautiful, new build, wound up with this huge cabinet in front. What we did was we went around the three sides, and it was a Victorian-type clapboard in a, not like a gray plum color, we got permission to paint the cabinet that color, so we were intentional about making it disappear visually, you know, if you go by today, you'll see it, but it's, it's not offensive, so.
That's all I have. That's all you had?
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Questions? No? Jim, you had the project?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the project in the applicant Canal Cove Development LLC, process modification for site plan review, special permit number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one C, which modifies special permits number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one A and nine, number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one B, and such, and as such relief as may be necessary for proposed modifications to the previously approved mixed-use development located on two Kendall Ray Place Buzzards Bay Mass. The property consists of four acres of undeveloped land within the downtown district core, sub-district growth incentive zone, and, and an AE flood loan, flood, flood zone. Mr. Chairman, based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, expert witnesses in the record, and the record for the proceedings, the planning board has found that this project is consistent with the Town of Born zoning bylaws, section twelve thirty, site plan review, section twenty-eight hundred downtown district, section twenty-eight twenty, mixed-use development, section twenty-eight twenty-seven, special permit criteria, section V definitions, and section thirty-one hundred lowland regulations. Special permit number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one C meet the criteria for special permit for the following: pedestrian, A, pedestrian vehicle flow and safety has been met; B, utilities and other public services are adequate; C, impacted areas to natural environment will be re- revegetated; D, impact upon nearby development premises is minimized and commercial labuders may experience minor impacts such as noise during construction; E, the proposed building is visually compatibility with its surroundings; and F, the project is located within the water resource district; G, there is a positive impact on the town's needs for the year-round housing. Therefore, I move to approve the site plan special permit number nineteen twenty twenty-one C in accordance with the following findings. Applicant proposed modificat, one applicant, the applicant proposed modification to a previously approved project to raise the grade of the site in the building situated closer to the canal to be above FEMA one hundred year floodplain elevation sixteen, similar to the approved grade of the adjacent hotel site, site to the east. Two, the applicant proposed to raise the elevation of building two by four feet, the applicant proposes to raise the elevation of the clubhouse by five point five feet. Three, the project continues to have one hundred and thirty-two condominium units and a five thousand three hundred and twenty-seven square foot two-story clubhouse and an outdoor pool. The applicant is actively working to secure tenants for the commercial space, and the architectural plan submitted proposed to program up to four thousand one hundred and thirty-five plus square feet on the first floor of building one as commercial space with the indoor commercial restaurant spacing totally two thousand one hundred and seventy-four plus square feet and office space totaling one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two plus square feet. Four, building one is proposed to be shifted slightly eastward to avoid any potential encroachment of building overhangs slash projections into the private right-of-way limits along the westerly portion of the site. Five, a two-tiered segment, segmental block wall system is proposed to be constructed at the rear of the site facing the canal to accommodate the higher site grades, the applicant proposes to enhance the landscape design along the tiered wall as well. Six, the applicant proposes to enhance the amenities by adding a large outdoor patio and a separate pool area. Number seven, the proposed plan modifies the previous drainage plan. It, it results in a more efficient consol, consult, yeah, consolation of the surface drainage system, and it is contained entirely on the property. Eight, the proposed plan adds one additional parking space. Conditions, the permit is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Born. Two, the building of seventy-five hundred square feet or more need to be protected with automatic sprinklers in accordance with the Mass State Building Code and Mass General Law Chapter one forty-eight, section twenty-six G. Three, at least two commercial Knox boxes will be required for each of the residential buildings and one for the clubhouse. Where am I, over here? Yep. I'm going right to this one, yep. Four, elevated Knox box is required on the main floor of the elevator to hold multiple sets of building keys and the appropriate elevator tool. Building codes require two-way emergency responder coverage for emergency responders. Six, fire access road plans to be reconfigured to show the truck entering from the opposite entrance, the truck will nose into the area in front of the building. Two, in front of building two, fire code prevents a dead end of more than a hundred and fifty feet. Seven, update the fire access road to document that any portion of the building, of building two, or any portion of the exterior wall of the first story of the building is located not more than two hundred and fifty feet from the fire apparatus access road, as measured by approved route around the exterior of the building. Eight, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, an as-built plan must be submitted to the planning board showing all additions to the plans above and below ground. Nine, the decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Land Court Registry and a copy returned to the planning department prior to issuance of a building permit. And I make a motion to approve this.
Okay. Anybody else on the board?
Second.
That come from John? Didn't see in here that they have to show the appurtenances above and below grade. Did you see that, Amanda? No? Okay.
They took it out, they took it out just for me, Amanda.
I'm leaving now.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote, I'll start with John.
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Mr. DeSette?
Yes.
Ms. Billado?
Yes.
Thank you. Liz?
Oh, I'm Liz.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm kidding.
Catherine?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Fuck, yes, and the chair votes yes.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Everyone have a safe weekend.
Thanks.
Yeah. I'll tell you, watching your crew down there stumping and taking the trees down, that's a good company. They had everything in place and, boy, they were moving. They do.
They'll be happy with their work in some way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appurtenances.
Yeah. Amanda. Okay, the next is application for site plan review slash special permit zero four twenty twenty-five. Two born rotary map twenty-four parcel seven, the application is to construct hundred and twelve, hundred and twenty-two unit storage facility. And the applicant's attorney is here. I'm going to let him do his presentation first. John, do you want to give him a hand?
No, I had a nice pork chop dinner today. Double baked potato.
Yeah, just hand them up and we'll pass them down the line. Thank you.
My name is Richard DiBenedictis, I'm with Webby Engineering, and we're proposing a, to construct a, a storage facility on the property that's, that's next to the Dunk and Donuts. It's actually, the Dunk and Donuts property was at one time two, two different properties, they were incorporated together by zoning, and so now it's one big property. So we're doing it under this, the, the bylaw that allows for us one or more additional buildings to be built as long as you're not sharing any of the setbacks and you have all the other, you meet all the other requirements of constructing a building. So the, obviously the front page here is, is the general site, you have the rotary here, and this is the entire property, the Dunk and Donuts is on the, the bridge side, and, and we, so we have, we submitted an engineering summary report, which I, I don't know if you want me to go through that, but basically I'll be talking about the different items as I go, as I show you the, the plan here. This is the, the existing conditions, Dunk and Donuts, open area, these three rectangles are the leaching area that was developed in the nineties for, when this was an IHOP, I actually designed this for, for the client, the same client. The IHOP was, was a, a regular restaurant with a lot of tables in it, the Dunk and Donuts is really mostly a takeout, it's got a few tables in it, but doesn't have anywhere near the capacity or the requirements that we provide in these three units. The septic tank and distribution tank are these two tanks here, so all the flow from here comes down to the, this spot here, and, and then is distributed to each one of these areas. This is actually a dosing facility. So we're not changing anything there, and the only sewage we'll have is the, is the office, which on, and one thing we have a, we show as a twelve by sixteen, but we're really looking at a ten by twelve office area at the, at the entrance, and I'll show you that. Now, one thing I do want to show you, this is, this being the connector, obviously, this area here is thirty feet, okay, and then there's another, there's another thirty feet for the, for the zoning, as we'll see on the next sheet. And one of, one of the, I think misconceptions because you're looking at this plan, unless you go out on the site, this is all densely vegetated in here, there's a lot of very tall oaks and birch, about thirty feet high, we're not touching that, as you can see, the only grading is on the, over the property line, so this area doesn't get touched, so it's a natural screening situation, that's why some of the comments didn't recognize that, because unless we actually took you out there and pointed it out, you probably would, wouldn't realize that. Same thing going on here, this is heavily vegetated, and it's a whole area all around the, the leaching fields, so this is about a hundred feet setback, you really can't see, you won't be seeing this from here or here because of the heavy vegetation, and to talk about the landscaping for screening, we'd have to see what we have left, you know, once we develop this, and, and if we have to do additional screening, we would do that, but basically we have natural screening around the perimeter. I, I only see one spot possibly. I, I only see one spot, possibly a point over here, that maybe we might have to add a, a regular fence rather than a screening, rather than a chain link fence. The chain link fence is primarily for security, it isn't for screening, because obviously you don't want kids or people running in and out of this place, so, so it is gonna be fenced, there is a fence around the building. The previous plan showed, well, actually, yeah, all the whole, but in previous plan we showed the erosion control, which, there is a comment about the limister construction. The limister construction is the, the erosion control facility, which is basically, this is very small dotted, this is not a fence, this is, this is erosion control going around basically to the property line. The actual fencing is a little different symbol. It's more of a, it's more little squares, but, let me, let me pull that out. So that's the erosion control and the limited construction. Basically, this, this shows you where we have our stormwater system, which we did provide through HydroCAD printout, and Sean made some comments about that, and I think, I think basically the first look at it, you found it adequate, and, so basically, the primary part of it is this basin over here, which is actually a natural depression that's taken the drainage right now from Dunkin' Donuts, and what we've designed it for is to, to continue to take it, but we made it a little larger. We've expanded it, we have a wall on the side, and, and we, we widened it a little bit, so that along with these two subsurface systems, this is open, and this is, these are subsurface to take the road, that takes all of the drainage and brings it, reduces it below the existing conditions, flows cubic feet and, and volume of that. So what we have is, is a road coming up, all our access is coming from Sandwich Road, not from the collector. This here is only put there for emergency access by the fire and police, and we've talked to, the, I believe it was a deputy fire chief that we talked to at one time, and he still has some comments which we still have to resolve. One of the comments that was in the, the note that Sean sent had to do with crossing over, and I believe, and I'm just asking Sean here, I believe that's what he's talking about is coming off of Sandwich Road coming in and taking a left turn, is that what they mean by crossing an existing pathway?
Yes, when you enter the property, you can't cross over a, a noncoming road to get to it.
And, and you can't do that now anyways, I mean, there's no left turn signs, two of them over here. You can come in over up here, so, but access from here, from Sandwich Road going west, is accessible to the site. Now, these units, as you saw in the, if you read this summary here, these units were originally a hundred-and-forty-two units, ten-by-tens, so it would've been fourteen thousand, that's why we were, the planning board referred us to the Cape Cod Commission because it was over ten thousand. We found that what they were requiring wasn't, wasn't financially feasible to do, so we reduced it to the ten thousand square feet, withdrew our application from the Cape Cod Commission and brought it back to your planning board, and, and your town planner validated that with the Cape Cod Commission. So basically, we, we've kinda reduced the, the size of the site because we're giving ten thousand square feet of building, or less than, actually ninety-nine hundred, I think, and, now this road here, as far as, just to address some of the fire department's issues, their ladder situation, which we did look at it after, after we spoke to Sean, I did pull it up again, and we did see it before, so we did, we made this, their requirement on, on the radius, the inside radius has to be thirty-five-point-seven-one feet of radius, these are forty, these are forty-foot radiuses. So, so they, the road meets their requirement, the, the road is twenty feet wide. We have a turnaround backup here, which the town planner has suggested in our first meeting, so that anybody coming in here can get back out. So this is a two-way road, and it's, it's not that steep a road because it is a wide road, it's avoiding as much vegetation as possible here. There's only a little bit of grading here and some grading over here, so most of the grading is very moderate.
Okay. Just quickly, gonna stop you there, you just said the roadway coming from Sandwich Road is not that steep?
Well, we, we made it as long as we could to make it, to reduce the...
But it's pretty steep.
Well, it's, this is about sixty, well, it goes from thirty feet to sixty-four feet, so it's a thirty-four, thirty-four foot difference between here and here.
Right.
Okay. So it's, but, but it would be much steeper if it was straight out. What I'm saying is that we try to make it moderate by winding it around and making it longer, so, so it meets the basic requirements. So again, the vegetation issue, if there, I understand there's a landscape architect involved with the planning board, if somebody has a suggestion. The only place I think that, if you wanna shield the, or do a little bit of landscaping on the Sandwich Road entrance area, we could, we could do that, but no one, you're really not gonna see this facility at all, and if there is a place where we will see it, we can either do by fencing or plantings as required. But, but the way the site is vegetated right now, as they say, I'm welcome taking the, the board out there, it's really heavy, heavily vegetated, and the trees are thirty feet high at least, and a lot of oaks in there. So, and we're gonna be bringing this down a little bit, it's, it's gonna pitch in this direction, so you're not really looking, if you, if you see anything through here, you have to be seeing it through the trees, and I don't think you're gonna see it, I don't think you'll even see the fence. But again, until we actually construct it, you're not gonna know how much of that vegetation is really blocking, you know, the visibility, because you have at least the thirty-foot, which maybe it might be set off five or ten feet off the road before you get the vegetation, and then you have another, I think it's a total of forty-five feet from the, from the property line to the, about twenty-four here, and from the, from the property line, starting with twenty-five. So that's basically what, what we're working with. The issue that the, the ladder truck has once it's in here, according from what I'm reading just on text, is to try to, they, they believe that they have to get up and down these roads. I mean, obviously, they can get in here, and they can go in here, and they can even come down here. If they come in the emergency road, this, this is wide open, this, you can travel from here to here without any trouble at all. I don't know if a ladder truck actually has to go down here. What I did do was I checked a couple of the storage facilities around here to see if, if that, you know, how they're handling that, and basically, Prime has, these are twenty-foot wide roads, Prime has sixteen-foot wide roads with a couple of twenty-two-foot wide roadways. So there's no way that a lot of trucks is gonna get any into there. I'm not criticizing them, they obviously got their own approval situation, but I'm just saying, normally you have twenty feet between these kind of buildings. The kind of building, if you had an individual building that was, that had, you know, heat and air conditioning and that kind of thing, like, like the building that they just built in Plymouth in the industrial park, that would be a building where you enter the building, you park your cars outside in the parking lot, and you, you take carts and bring your, your stuff inside the building, and take elevators and all that stuff, that's not what this is, this is a standard storage facility. It's not, it's not one of those very fancy developments. So, and from what I, I don't know if there's another storage facility, I couldn't find another one in Bourne, so if there is only one, then we, we have a, a good argument about the marketing situation that you probably need, storage, I mean, it's Cape Cod, people come and go, take furniture in and out, all that. Now, there was a comment also about, about waste control. We, we purposely didn't put a dumpster here for the reason, this is a facility where people bring their stuff, and some of it's like junk, and what we don't want is for people fill dumpsters when they're clearing out a, a storage facility. But if the, if the planning board requires it, we'll put a, we'll put a dumpster in there. But what we'd rather do is, is have the, the lease agreement stipulate that they have to take all the refuse out of, off the site. So that's just a, a design idea, but again, you know, we're, we're subject to change on that if you want. There was also a comment about being able to park, I mean, the parking is always, on these kind of facilities, is right at the, at, at your particular unit. I mean, you, you will always drive up to the unit and bring your stuff in, and so we did provide some parking over here, but it's really, you know, you're not really taking carts, for most people, for most part, people drive up to a, a garage unit, and they'll have a digital entrance lock, and they'll put their, their stuff in there and close it up and leave. So, so as I say, the only other issue, and I'll have to talk to the fire department to, and see what their idea is, if, I mean, going around the building, you almost consider this as a building, but, but you could get all around it, I mean, you could, you can make this curve, but, you know, I, I have to see if there's something they have in mind that, that we can do to, to make it better, but we, we haven't figured it out yet, so. So I think that was most of the issues, I don't know if you wanna, I'll open up to questions, and Sean and Jennifer might have some.
It looks like you're counting on a filter mitt for erosion control with all these changing elevations. Have you considered a silt fence along with that?
Uh, yeah, well, we, we, you know, we showed it...
I only see the filter mitt.
Yeah, that's right. Do you think we need more?
I would definitely think you would need a silt fence behind it.
Yeah, we use a lot of the socks on projects, but...
Yeah, we use them too, but it's not enough, especially with the changes in elevation and the amount of clearing you're gonna be doing. And then also parking for the office, you'll have staff, you'll have people coming to do leasing and, you know, change of staff and that sort of thing, that, that's another question I would...
Yeah, we, and, and as I said, we have some parking that's away from the office, you know, they have to park here and come to the office, but that's a good point, we, we can probably provide some parking right next to the office over here.
Those are my thoughts.
And also is the issue on lighting. I've been talking to a consultant, and she's gonna be working with us, and she works with a company called Rab, R-A-B, and what they do is they lay out the entire site. We, the reason we haven't jumped into that is because we know we have to have lighting for security, but we don't wanna have lights on all the time, so I wanted to have a professional do it, so we sought out, and this came to us, and she, I told her, wait till I have this hearing to see if there's anything in particular that the planning board want, because we're, we're thinking it's gonna be a combination of timed lightings, which would be, you know, sparsely through here for security purposes, and motion lighting. The motion lighting will probably be the buildings, but we might have a couple that are timed on the buildings too. So we'll have some minimal lighting that's gonna be there for security purposes, but also considering lighting in general is for security, you know, we'll have a good lighting scheme, we'll leave it up to them. As, as I said, the name of the company is Rab, I, I really never heard them before, but what they do is they do the entire layout.
They've been around.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I figure you probably have, but we, we've done stuff with shopping centers and stuff like that where we've identified certain kinds of lighting, but on this kind of a situation where it's somewhat isolated and the fact that it's not easily seen can be a detriment, because you don't want people breaking into, into these units, so you wanna have motion lights at least and, and some kind of a system like that. Now, the other, they with the fire department and the police departments, they want this Knox system of...
The Knox box.
Yeah, yeah, and, and some places we've had, where we've had gates, we, we've had remotes, but I, I agree with the, the fire chief that those remotes don't always work, so they, they have basically a, a different system and we're fine with that, so we'll be...
Doc, did you have anything else?
Yeah, a few things. Tell me about the emergency access egress. Was that required by emergency services? Did they say we want that access, let's call it emergency only?
Yeah.
From the Dunkin' Donuts lot into this facility?
No, we, we designed that initially because we thought it should be a second access, but not, or a second access for emergency vehicles only, we, it's not for public, they can't get in this way, this is a do not...
I think it's a fatal flaw.
Okay, go ahead.
It's just terrible. This is, this is a B-two zone, it encompasses the whole rotary, but the unspoken part of that is, it's the, it's the western gateway to Cape Cod. All our visitors and our residents come over the bridge, they'll go around the rotary. If they don't see it going south, they'll see it coming north. They get in the rotary, they line up to make the turn, if they're turning down Sandwich Road Connector, you've cleared away everything to make that emergency access. So I turned down, I'm a visitor from down south, I turned down Connecticut roadway, I'm sorry, Sandwich Road Connector.
Right.
And that's my view, down that emergency egress. What I see at night is, I think I see something like five or six lights, light packs, your security lights that are on the buildings facing the Sandwich Road Connector, that's what's showing on your lighting plan.
I don't think you'll, you'll see the lighting down here, these are, this is lower than this spot up here, this is a high spot.
Ugh. I'm up high looking down, and I'm looking down the throat of that emergency egress, and what I'm seeing is two buildings, and I'm descending, and I'm at elevation, I'm at elevation seventy-six, seventy-five, and these buildings are at elevation...
Sixty-five.
Sixty-eight, sixty-five, I'm looking down on them, and they, there are four, there, your lighting plan shows a number of lights on the small building, and at least two more that are visible on the next building in, the next building to the north. I don't see any landscaping on that steep slope behind the Dunkin' Donuts. What I'm saying is, it's just a funnel view, and the other side, when you drive up the Sandwich Road Connector, when you're waiting to rotate into that traffic circle, you get a chance to slow down and see everything. I don't buy that, that, that's a complete screen from the property line down to the roadway. I, I think it's backaways, it's oak trees, there's winter, if you look at your grading plan, at the ends, at the ends of your grading lines, if you connect the dots, you have to clear halfway from your fence to the property line. Connect the dots at the ends of your grading lines where they come back into the existing grade. What I'm getting at is, it would've been helpful to have an existing vegetation line.
Well, the, the existing vegetation line would be just, would be all the way along here, would be in that...
That's way, that's just way too vague. What I'm saying is, I have a huge problem with that emergency egress, and I'm not sure how to solve it.
Okay, is it because you don't want...
Visually, visually, I'm just invited to look at this light industrial use in the middle of the gateway to Cape Cod. People are gonna sit in that traffic waiting to come down to the rotary, and they're gonna say, who greenlit this project? What, what does this say about this town to put a light industrial use right at the gateway to Cape Cod? That's, that's the core that I can't get past, all these other technical details...
Dunkin' Donuts is lit, is, is usually lit, right?
I understand, I understand. This is making it that much worse.
Okay. I think what you're saying, and I'm not, I'm not sure, that you don't like the, the fact that this is coming out in this direction towards the rotary, that if this roadway was coming up here, it would be better? I mean, do you think the idea of having a separate emergency access is bad? Is that what you're saying? I'm not... I'm not sure.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm saying that's a fatal flaw to me.
Walked, walked it the other day that emergency access is somewhat in place now, and it does allow you a pretty good sight down to, from the parking lot or from Sandwich Road, right down there.
There is a path, yeah.
Cleared path when they actually put the septic system on that property for the Dunkin' Donuts. It's down there, and also you get a pretty good whiff of that septic system, 'cause it has the air extenders on it, and it's, um, it's pretty strong.
Yeah, I did, just a quick, just a quick look at this, and when you, when you combine this into one property, let's call it the sort of pre-existing forest, is about ten percent of what it was. Maybe, it may be a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, but the property drops thirty feet from the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot to the point down here, it's thirty feet, and you're putting in a fairly flat land use. So the engineering is functional, but it just overwhelms the site. The program overwhelms the site.
But if it was, but if this was the same elevation as Dunkin' Donuts, that would be, that would be highly gessoed. And, and it would be, I mean, there's nothing engineering-wise or even zoning-wise that would prohibit that.
I, I guess that, I guess that's part of the problem. It's so much, it's fifty-five pounds in a fifty-pound sack. It just, there's so much program here that, I did a thought experiment, and I'll invite the planning board to do a thought experiment.
Sure.
Take this project, put it across the rotary, similar, in a B2 zone, and have a forty-five foot setback from the property line with a chain-linked fence as a screen, and security lights facing the road. How, how does that feel as a gateway?
Well, it's not gonna be, the, the chain-linked fence is not the screen. The, the chain-linked fence is back thirty feet of heavily wooded area.
Yeah, that's, that's subjective, heavily wooded.
Uh, we're not gonna touch it, so if it's not gonna be cut down, why would it be subjective? There's only, there's only grading in this one spot over here, uh, and, and the rest of it is, is removal over here, but, but there's no, but for thirty feet, this is not being touched.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna turn it back to you.
Okay. Mr. Doucette, I see you with the hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome back the applicant from the visit to the Cape Cod Commission. Uh, I got, just a couple of points, couple of, um, points that I'd like to bring up. And first, uh, is the time constraints. Do we have, do we have time to go over this, this one next, another meeting tonight, or do we have to make a decision tonight?
I'll let Jen respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if, if, uh, the project gets continued, a time, time waiver must be signed.
Thank you very much.
We did that.
Yeah, a waiver of time.
I have it here if you, if you...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then the, the second question, and Catherine has been working on this part as well, and I just don't wanna step on her feet as well, but I got a couple of questions here.
Sure.
And the second is the percentage of the grade of the driveway throughout the site, especially those leaning onto Sandwich Road. I just wanna make sure that we don't exceed the, uh, the percentage of the grade going down Sandwich Road in case of an increment, whether it's not been listed on the, on the project.
Right, well, it was an eight percent requirement. You gotta be eight percent or less on, on, on the roadway.
And looking at the, at the towns list here that we have for outstanding issues, uh, they have fourteen issues by the staff alone. I'm looking to try to maybe get a traffic study, because in the area of the rotary, in that all-encompassing area that, like even Dr. was talking about, we've had too many incidents in this area with the past history, so I'm looking at maybe trying to get a traffic study.
Well, we're not coming out on the roadway at all.
Pardon?
We're not coming out, we're not using the rotary. This is all on Sandwich Road by the canal.
I didn't say that. I, I said in the area.
Okay.
So those are some of my concerns, because we wanna make sure that we have the grade coming down into the cir, into Sandwich Road and the traffic study consideration, because we've had way too many incidents in the area of that rotary. And I, when I say that, it's that whole encompassing area of the bridge area of the rotary system.
I, I've worked, I've worked on that because I was, worked on Dunkin' Donuts when they were denied access, so we did that with the Mass DOT. Uh, I found two accidents over thirty years. At that time, that was, that was like six years ago. I don't know if there's been a lot more accidents since then? Two accidents, and they were at the, they were at the rotary.
Hold me, stop for a second. The planning board has no enforcement issue going on to the Moore Rotary. We can't allow that or disallow it. We have no, on a state property, so we, we're trying to look at it for the town of Moore itself, because the state has its own issues. We're looking at it from a town level. I know you were originally planning the order of the Cape Cod Commission, and then you decided to invite yourself back to us, so there were pros and cons to, to both decisions. So I just wanna make sure for the town of Moore that we have covered, if we look at this project and we try to either approve it or deny it, that we're doing it under the proper causes. That's all my concern is.
Yeah, oh, I'm not arguing with your concern. I'm just saying that we designed it based on the fact that we would not impact the rotary, that, that's why we only dealt with the, with the Sandwich Road access. So I'm just saying that was...
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
This, this is Liz, and I just...
Go, go right ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Okay. I, I don't, not living in the area, you might not realize that Sandwich Road, which appears to be sort of a quiet, you know, not many people are going on that road place, is actually a frequently used, um, way to get around the bridge traffic and go up onto the, it, almost everyone I know does that. Um, so it's, it's way more utilized than you might realize, and that I was very concerned about what's gonna happen there when people are going in and out, and if it's easier than you expect, so that's all.
I just, just so that you know, I live two miles from the Sagamore Bridge. I'm in this area a lot because my client is here, uh, so I, I am very familiar with this, with this road, but I'm not arguing with that either. There, there is traffic down here. What kind of traffic you get in a stock, in a, in a, in a storage facility? It's not a retail thing where people are coming and going all the time. They drop their stuff off, they might be back six months from then. It's the least possible impact relative to traffic, unless it's a cemetery. I mean, what else could you do? You don't, you don't have, uh, you're not gonna have a lineup of cars coming in here, maybe, maybe the first month, because you're opening up, but once you're filled up, you don't have traffic on a regular basis.
Okay. Dan, hold on one second. Corinne, I saw your finger waving.
Yeah, um, I, I agree with, um, Doc on this one about the entrance to Cape Cod. Um, I'm just kinda disappointed that we didn't look at this area, um, during zoning and planning, because this area at one time was supposed to have a fast food restaurant, and the planning board denied that because of the traffic impacts. I think Sandwich Road and the, um, well, there's actually two Sandwich Roads, in the front and in the back, and one is a historic road, they're both state roads, um, and they're heavily, heavily trafficked. And I know that this is a low impact, but I just, that with that steep road going down to Sandwich Road, um, where there's trucks, vehicles coming out of there, I just think it may pose a, a hazard. I think we need to look at that a little bit closer. Um, coming, sitting there in traffic and seeing these storage units is not, to me, the best and the highest use of this property, but unfortunately, we allow this. Should we allow it here? Well, we need to make sure that it meets every criteria possible. And I think, um, one of the criterias under a special permit, how does it impact the nearby premises? Does it fit in? Does it fit into what that area is? And I think we really need to look at that. Is that a use that we think is the best use there? Even though it's allowed, we still have a special permit criteria. How does it impact those surrounding areas, those neighborhoods, that historic district, that historic roads? So I think we as a board need to look a little bit closer. Is this the use that we feel really fits in, into this area?
Thank you, Corinne. Mr. Doucette?
Thank you.
You got your finger up.
Is the, is the applicant wanting this signed as an extension or waiver?
Yes, he has it.
He has it already.
We've already done that.
Yep, he's got it. Anybody, anybody else?
Um, I just wanna duck that in the night.
Before you jump in, I'm just gonna say a couple of things. One, as it's been pointed out, Sandwich Road is a state road.
Oh, yeah.
The new bridge configuration, although I firmly believe it's twenty or thirty years away, talks about much heavier use of Sandwich Road on the lower end where your driveway's gonna be. Um, actually, that's gonna be the preferred bus route for our local schools to come that way instead of coming into what we currently know as the rotary circle. So I think that road is gonna get a lot more use going forward. The other thing I'm concerned about is the steepness of that driveway coming out on the Sandwich Road. I can just see somebody sliding right across the road because they can't stop coming down that hill. Eight percent is steep, and you add a little bit of ice to it and a little bit of stupidity on somebody driving the car, that's, that's gonna be an issue there, so. And I also concur with Corinne's, um, I'm concerned that this is not the best use for this piece of property.
Can I address that?
Go right ahead.
What would be the best use?
That's not...
Do what? I'm sorry.
What was that, Mr. Doucette?
That's not our decision with the best use.
Right, right. That's not for us to do. I just don't...
Well, I'm just saying that this is the least impact you could possibly have, except for a cemetery, as far as the number of people coming and going. So the tra, the traffic might be on the road, but does that mean that you can't do anything with the site because there's traffic on the road? It's the traffic that this creates is relative to whether this project is, is feasible or not. Not the traffic on the road. The traffic on the road is, is gonna, it means that you can't do anything on that road.
But I...
The other thing I did notice when I went there the other day, where your driveway comes out, is that in the paperwork that I looked at, it's claimed that you had a three-hundred foot sightline to the left or to the west and to the east. That is, there's no way there's three hundred feet. You might have a hundred feet, and then there's all kinds of brush there. So you don't have three hundred feet to the right at all.
We did it by survey, but okay.
Okay. Um, so that's what I have. Anybody else from the board before I turn it over to the reviewer? Oh, Dan, you had, there's that finger, Dan's finger going again.
Yeah, so, so, there, I, there's just human issues we've had, you know, we had, like I said, fourteen of my staff, so I, I only suggest that we continue this so staff and the board can come to an agreement and try to solve some of these issues.
Corinne?
Yeah, I think there, you know, it, it may be allowed use, but how can we mitigate it and make it a better project? Um, I think it's unfair for the applicant to ask us, well, what's the best use to go there? We haven't done, you know, that study that we can throw on the table and say, this is what we thought of and this is what should go there. We probably should have done that in the past. But if we can't do that, we can try to mitigate as much as we can to make it the safest project. It may be low impact, but the area that it's in, any impact is going to be of concern. One is a ninety-degree onto Sandwich Road driveway, I don't think is the best, you know, driveway. I mean, should we limit it to right turn only? Um, should we have a, a softer curve coming out of there? There's a whole bunch of things that we could consider to make this a better project, because unfortunately, the town of Moore allows us use there. Um, but the way the project's laid out right now, with the slope, with the ninety-degree, with this, you know, um, the shading and all that, I think we need to consider a little bit more. I think the way the project's presented tonight is not approvable, in my view.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, and one suggestion for your client, um, it would be very helpful if your client would stake out the limit of grading on the Sandwich Road Connector side. The limit of grading line on the Sandwich Road Connector side. And then we know anything on the far side of those stakes is going to go away. That way we have an objective view of what kind of natural screening would be left.
Okay, are you saying...
No, the Sandwich Road Connector.
Oh, over here.
There you go. Your grading lines pretty much go halfway between your fence line and the right-of-way line. So I'm assuming about half of the, half of that vegetation is gonna go away. So it'd be helpful if you, you or your client would stake out the limit of grading next to Sandwich Road Connector, so that we can look at it in the field and say, anything beyond those stakes is going to go away.
Okay. Okay, there won't be any grading here?
Understood, understood.
Okay, so you want, you want us to lay out this grading here?
Uh, no, because you can tell that's all gonna go away. You can tell by looking at it.
Yeah, right.
At the point of, at the point of the property, that's all gonna go away.
Right.
You can just look at it. As you go up the, as you go up the hill on Sandwich Road Connector...
Yeah.
The grading lines go back away from the right-of-way line somewhat to about halfway to your fence line. I'd like to see that...
Talking about over here?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Limit of grading line between the fence line and the right-of-way line would be very helpful.
We can do that.
We could look at that and say, anything beyond the fence, anything beyond the stakes is going to disappear.
Okay, and also, just to address, and I'm assuming you're, you're gonna continue? Is that what you're thinking right now?
Don't know.
Because what I'm, what I'm saying is, it seems to be, if we have a traffic engineering report, we, we've got the site distance, we've got, we're, we're saying there's tremendous buffering and heavily, uh, vegetation in here that we're not touching, and, and there's an issue of the traffic here, which I think, I read a two thousand fourteen report or something, it was like twenty-two thousand cars a day going on this road. Uh, that was then, I don't know what it is now.
Probably more, totally more.
That was an old report that was done for the sake of the rotary. So, um, okay, so in other words, if we had a traffic engineering company do that, would that, or is that just a waste of time?
That exists at one level. The visual impact, I'm not sure we can engineer our way out of, so I wanna understand what's going to be left.
Sure.
And what, what is possible to do here. Now, let me tell you, that emergency egress access is a huge problem that I don't see going away.
Well, one way it could go away is if we put a natural fence here. You're not gonna see, see into the fight. If you, if you fenced off a section of this with a gate with a, a regular fence, then that whole visibility thing goes away. So that, that can be done very easily. Or we make it more, more direct up, 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 you know, instead of coming out this way, we, we go straight up the, the hill here, uh, as much as we can. I'm not sure how we can do that. This is already graded the way it is, but... In other words, there are engineering situations that we have to look at...
Yes.
...to resolve the issues that you brought up, but they are engineering solutions. I mean, for... To say that we can't develop anything line here because there's a lot of traffic here, there's a lot of traffic there, that, that isn't, that doesn't make any sense to me. I've al, I've only been doing this for fifty years. I've never, I never heard that as an excuse. If it, if it's impacting, if it's impacting the traffic, yes. If it's impacting the traffic, if we had a housing development here, if we had, had our, something that was high retail, if we had another Dunkin' Donuts type of facility, that would be constant traffic, and I can understand how that would impact that. I don't understand how this impacts the traffic out there.
Some of us have problems with traffic, some of us have problems with other aspects.
Yeah.
And my, my problem is it looks like too much program for this site.
Right, no, I understand that. I understand your, your issue. I, I think we're looking at it as, this is a site that requires certain kinds of situations to be designed, and one of them is the amount of use. If you have a lot of traffic coming in here, that's not a good use of the site.
Traffic footprint.
Footprint, yeah, and my, and I, my argument obviously is you're not really gonna see much of the footprint for it. I mean, we know that it's down lower, we know the trees are thirty feet high, we know we have probably at least thirty feet of buffer at this side and a hundred feet over here.
I don't know any of that, I gotta be honest, that's very subjective.
Yeah.
I'm gonna turn it back to the chair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Catherine, you're the reviewer on this?
Yes, um, yes, Mr. Chairman. I've reviewed the project, and the applicant, William C. Roberts, Moore Rotary, proposes construction of a... Roberts, Bourne Rotary, proposes construction of a storage unit facility at the property located at 2 Bourne Rotary, map 240, parcel 7. The project is located at a B2 district, and it is in allowed use under section 2220. Mr. Chairman, based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is not consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning bylaw 1230, site plan review 1331, special permit criteria, and 2440, two or more principal buildings. Based on the special permit criteria and its review of the exhibits, testimony of witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is not consistent with section 1331. The project does not meet pedestrian vehi, vehicular flow and safety criteria. The Bourne Fire Department has not signed off on this project. It does, the project does not meet the impact on natural environment criteria, and the proposed plan shows significant clearing of natural forest. The project does not meet the visual compatibility with the surroundings criteria. The planning board feels the project does not meet the visual compatibility with the surrounding, with the surroundings of the area. Therefore, I move to deny the site plan review, special permit application 042025, in accordance with the above findings, terms and conditions.
Second that. Motion made by Catherine to deny, what's that? Second by Jim. Any further comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Doucette?
Yes. So, I just wanna ask, in the, if we vote yes, that denies the project, that we vote no, that supports the project, correct?
Yeah.
If we vote yes, it's to deny the project. Correct.
But it's all clear on which way we vote. Thank you.
Okay. So, on that, we'll start with the roll call vote. I'm gonna start over here with John.
Yes.
And then, I'm gonna jump up to the screen. Ms. Brown?
Yes, and just so you know, Amanda's not there, her power went out.
Okay. Yeah, I got that from a few people. Mr. Doucette?
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Moore? Oh, Corinne? Sorry, don't know what your name is anymore. She's changed it again.
She's on mute.
Corinne, you're on mute, we can't hear you. Give us a thumbs up. Still can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I support the denial, yes.
Okay. Catherine?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Doc, yes. Chair votes yes. We're denying your project, so...
Subject to appeal, right?
Subject to appeal.
10 days, or is that the...
You have 10 days, but you have two years after the denial to come back with a different plan.
Yes, well...
20 days.
The way it was laid out, there's nothing that will satisfy it. You just said that. You're saying the road's too steep, it's not. You're saying the traffic's too much. There's really, nothing you deny is really, you can't say that there's a buffer, there is a buffer. Okay, so, it will be in here.
Okay, um, next on our agenda is election of officers. So, on that process, before we get going, I do not want to stay on as chairman. I'm not sure how much longer I'm gonna stay on the board. I wanna stay here and help whoever becomes the chairman, the vice chairman and stuff, as we go along. Mr. Doucette is here, the same thing, and Corinne, we can help other people out, but it's time for the newer people to start to take over. Mr. Doucette, did you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we take a nomination, I'd like to nominate John Duggan for chair.
I will second that. Motion made for Mr. Duggan, and I have a second. Any further nominations? Roll call vote? John, you are to accept that?
Yes.
Yes. Liz?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Doucette.
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Vice chairman?
I think Liz would do a good job.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Thank you.
Any other nominations? I would nominate Catherine also as a potential for vice chair. No seconds on that? Okay. Okay, on the motion, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Liz?
Am I voting for what?
You. For you as vice chair.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Doucette?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yes.
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 And last we need is a secretary?
Mm-hmm. Clerk.
Clerk, clerk. Any nominations for clerk?
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Catherine Walton for clerk.
Second.
Second, third.
No, I really don't wanna...
You don't have to do anything.
Do I have to take notes?
Nope.
Nope.
That's all done. We have people to do that. What it does is, if the chairman's not here, you would be back up to the vice chair. That's all.
All right. I don't have to take notes?
No, you don't.
Okay.
Awesome responsibility.
Yeah.
It's huge. You'll wake up screaming.
Okay, so I have a nomination for Catherine for clerk. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second from John. Okay, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doucette? Yes?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. Congratulations, Catherine. Now, get ready, here's a notebook you're gonna have.
We lied about something else.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Get me out of here.